I've been totally confused about the time of sun last few days. But I believe it's six o'clock and we will call our meeting to order. Appreciate the ones who've come tonight. I see the election has preempted our meeting pretty well tonight, but we're probably the ones that did so well. We'll try to get through this as quickly as possible so you can go and watch your sets and see who's doing what tonight in the elections. So I think all of our minds have been on this. Again, we're appreciative of you attending our first business meeting. We had our organization meeting last night, of course, and tonight will be more of a business meeting. And we have a few items to cover tonight and try to get through it as quickly as possible. We've got kind of a situation here with our first item. It's the recommendation to approve the minutes of the last council meeting. Calls for a motion on the second. I'm thinking Tammy is the only one who can act on this because she's back and we weren't part of meetings. So Tammy, could you recommend us to approve the minutes?
Yes, yes, I have read the minutes and they are correct and I make a motion that we adopt them as presented.
We're gonna have to accept that. We can't go further. There's no one here to second. So we're gonna accept the motion of Tammy to approve our minutes of the last meeting. Thank you for that, Tammy. Our second item of business tonight is the recommendation to pay our monthly accounts that are for October. Assuming everyone's had a chance to look those over. Any questions before we ask for a motion on last month's bills? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve our bills payable for the month?
I'll make that motion.
Tammy made a motion to pay our bills. Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, would say yes.
Yes.
Okay. If you want to say nothing.
I don't hear a part of that, so I don't know. I just abstained about it.
All right, we have to pay our bills every month, so that's what that's about. All right, we've got a third item of business tonight is a recommendation to approve the contract with the State of Alabama Department of Transportation for the upgrade of our traffic signals in various locations in town. I think there's three locations on the south end of town on 43 and two locations on Highway 74. That would be the caution light by the courthouse there near Scott Hunt's office and probably the traffic light just above it. This was a contract the mayor had asked the state to give us for the upgrades and I believe they've agreed to provide our materials for this upgrade, but we'll have to contract with an electrical company to get the actual changes done, the upgrades done for our traffic signals in three locations south and two, I believe, on 74 highway. Do we have a motion to proceed with approving this contract with the State of Alabama Transportation Department? Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a motion on second. Any other discussion before we vote?
How much it gonna cost? It says you don't see Hamilton is responsible for the installation.
Okay. We'll have to bid that. That has to be right before this committee and we'll go bid for the work. We have used a company out of Florence, I believe, for repairs. They're about the only one that we can get to kind of here, I guess, to do these repairs.
Is that that right?
Yeah. Shoals Electric got most of them.
Shoals Electric.
They just completed the last couple of months and wanted the weaker red light and light, the main light there.
They'll give us a bid, is that correct, Mike?
They'll give us a close.
They'll give us a close as to what they'll do it for and we'll make that known to council.
We'll have to come forth contacting them if I don't know.
Tammy and I talked briefly this afternoon about the signal light, the blinking light there that seems to give a word of caution to people coming off Mitchell Hill and moving, if they're moving through the red light trying to make that up and have light for them to slow down. I don't know really if we need to take that light down. I'm not, I'm not totally sure if I wanna give that light up. Were you, Tammy?
No, I'll be voting no because I do not want that removed unless there's a, I mean, unless somebody can explain to me why we need to remove that caution light because I do think it serves a purpose there.
Personally, I'd relax if just one had one person to bid on anything. I think we should look for another bidder on anything we have to do without just one because even sometimes when you get two, they get together and price, make price before they come and other bids lower than other than a bid, they take time back on a lot of things that I think you have to be awfully careful about. And if you just got one, you just have to take the price to get it.
Do y'all know of another company that does this kind of work, you guys, that's with the street department?
No. That's the only one we can use. Then it happens sometimes if lightning runs in on one of them and you can call them and they'll tell them next day or something.
I guess they've been standby at the city as far as I know. We've used them various times, haven't we? I've seen them in town before working on things. We never want to get the highest, I'll be, you know, as far as the highest bill for our work. I really don't have a problem with getting a bid. I don't have a problem if y'all will reconsider your motion on second before we vote. If we talk about this some more, it's just something we haven't had a chance, even you on the block, we haven't had a chance to discuss this. Y'all wanna table it?
Well, if this has to be done now, I'd say we could, we could go ahead and do it as far as I'm concerned, but from now on, I'd like to have two bids or three or more on anything, you know, instead of just one bid because I've never taken one bid in my bids.
I think that's fair.
It's like a bid.
If we can get others to submit bids, we just, you know, I don't know if we're able to get there to bids at this point. I don't have time to research this. This is something that.
I say I'll.
Lady requested this contract with the state, State Department on these upgrades and we're playing catch-up here. We don't exactly know.
Right.
Tammy has some thoughts about the caution light, if it was gonna be eliminated and she thinks it's a safety item for the city and I don't disagree with that. Scott, do you have any input on this? You know anything about this?
No, young man, just great little, other than looking at the contract and it seems to be the same basic contract the state has used before.
Do you know why they're wanting to remove that caution light?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Is it the one by Charles?
Yes.
Uh, you know, just my personal opinion on this one, I would agree with Tammy that that's a pretty popular intersection and there's obviously a lot, unfortunately I can say, a lot of fender benders there, cars using that road to skip the main red light. I think a caution light is.
I worry as much about pedestrians that caution lights as I do people in cars, you know, folks will kinda observe it. Something as big as a car, but they might not observe something as small as a child or something.
Right, there's a lot of pedestrians that come from, I guess, this first I think southwest over towards the courthouse and crossing there, me being one of them quite a bit, but.
We got a motion on second. If someone, if someone wants to still table this in our discussion, do we have time to research it, but I don't, I won't call for a vote at this time.
Let's have it, Tammy. I was watching the upgrade. When you say they're gonna upgrade the traffic signals, like the main red light, what does the contract say they're gonna do about that one? What kind of upgrade are they gonna do? Because that's the one that's.
The main red light was upgraded in January. The main red light and the next one in front of the hardware, the hardware store and the bank building, that was, we did that upgrade in January. So things are just the other ones, but they're wanting to remove the caution light there between their courthouse and Scott Hunt's and I'm not for that.
Okay, and what's the other two that are? It basically changes from bulb light to LED light.
LEDs, that's where we're going with this. We replace a lot of bulbs, LEDs along life bulbs.
You didn't know it? I mean, did any of y'all know that the lighting didn't change this a week?
We just.
No difference. I haven't, I just, I was gonna wind up very quick, I didn't know. I mean, it's.
We seem a little uninformed on this. I'm sorry, I didn't get more input from you guys. I just didn't have a chance to visit with you. We can't really have meetings outside of these meetings, so I'll have to talk to you individually as I get information. I just noticed this was an item that started under Ways Administration and he requested this contract and we've been granted a contract for the updates.
Are you speaking of Dr. Perry, ma'am?
That's right.
I might, I might second or a motion that we go ahead with this time, but before we do this again, I think that they'd look at least two bids, but if this makes a big harm, I think we should just go ahead now with it this time.
That's been amended motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of accepting the State Transportation Department's upgrade contract for these signal lights in Hamilton, say aye. Those opposed? We have one opposed. Okay. We'll proceed and we'll be better informed as we, now, just let me say this. I come into town from the south every morning and there's been a malfunction in that light, the Muzzingware red light, I call it, for a long time. The folks going south proceed, the folks coming north have to sit there an extra 15, 20, 25 seconds before the light gives you the green light after they've gone. So are y'all aware of that, guys?
Yeah, aye.
Anyway, that's just a fact of life and I hadn't understood why, but you know, that's just the way it was.
I guess, well, I understand if we're gonna have to do the installation, but why are they gonna tell us we're gonna have to take the caution light down? How can you understand that part of it?
There again, are we removing this caution light, Mike?
Are we? No, we're not removing it or are they removing it? I'm asking you. Tammy, you said they just wanted to move the caution light.
This says complete removal of that caution light.
I think it says there is. Contract will remove it against the thing that Tammy's written. To answer your question about that light, there's a turn signal going south, turns left goes Muzzingware. That's what the delay is when you're going north.
When there's no cars sitting there, it must give a turn signal, yeah?
Yes, probably does, yes. Do we have to take out the caution light?
According to this contract, I mean, that's, how this is worded is there's equipment upgrade, operation and maintenance or the things that are checked for all the others, but then complete removal is checked for the caution light.
My understanding with the DFT is they have complete control of the red, of the lights and the cities are responsible for the maintenance of it.
Okay, we, we passed that recommendation to accept the State of Alabama Department of Transportation's upgrade contract for these signal lights in Hamilton. We will look at the matters of the actual work going forward and Gene says we'll see if there's bidders that can come in on this. I'd like to get it done. You know, I don't know about Shoals Electric, they're a private entity that probably tries to help the cities. I don't know if they're used to having to give competitive bids or if they would give competitive bids for this kind of work. I really don't know. Anybody know anything about that?
I don't know for sure, but I, I don't think when they did the lights last, I think probably the DFT contacted Shoals to do the work on and we just, without a knowledge, I probably shouldn't say it.
I'll, I'll be better informed when we talk about this kind of work next. I'm just learning some of these things. I plan to learn them well, so we'll be better informed when we bring that motion like this. Okay. This is the time of year that we pay for services for the county. The fourth item on the agenda tonight is the recommendation to approve payment to Mayor and County Commission for emergency management expenditures for the fiscal year 2016, 2017 in the amount of $9,716.44. And this is a portion that we're billing for annually, is that correct, Angela? For emergency management expenditures, the cost is $9,716.44. Do I have a motion to pay that expenditure to Mayor and County Commission?
I'll make the motion.
Gene made the motion. Need a second?
I'll second.
Kenneth, second? Okay. And we call for a vote now. Those in favor, say aye. And those opposed? These are pretty much cut and dried bills that we get annual as I understand, I questioned them today. Second recommendation is to approve the payment to the Mayor and County Commission for communications expenditures for the fiscal year 2016, 2017, which will be an amount of $62,461.48. By comparison, I looked at us expenditures today, I think comparing us to like Wensville there, about 42,000 or so and we're about 62,000 for those services. And this has a lot to do with our law enforcement. Would you talk a little bit about that, Gene?
Yes, sir, that is, this is a communication system, NCIC system, a radio system, is partial payment of salaries for dispatchers around the clock, record keeping, keeping up the contact nationwide to be able to link back and forth across and plus communicate, then communicate with us in emergency situations or day-to-day activity calls. This is something, this price was obtained several years ago. I don't know exactly when, but it was something that the county agreed upon, the cities agreed upon and it's like a pro-rated issue according to population.
We pay for services that come through the county is what it amounts to and without it, we're kinda dead in the water as force enforcement on criminal law enforcement, this kind of thing. This is very important to our city functions for the police department, that we need. So I'd need a motion to pay that bill to the Mayor and County Commission on some. This is annual billing, is that correct, Angela? Okay. $62,461.48. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Kenneth? Kenneth made the motion and we'll need a second.
Second.
Now, a second from Gene. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a recommendation to renew agreement with the Hamilton area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $17,500. This is their annual budget that we allow and this includes, I believe, a $750 increase for this year. There's not been an increase for about four years, I think, and $750 is about what they're needing to kind of break even on all their activities. In this agreement, the chamber has agreed to promote Hamilton, also the events they promote of the Jerry Brown Arts Festival, Shrimp Boil, Miss Hamilton Pageant and related pageants, Betty Hachey River Fall Fest, the Christmas Parade, Santa on the Square, National Day of Prayer, and they'll have public, published materials, publications for the city of Hamilton printed out of their budget and mailed out to different people or handed out at least, if not mailed out. So we have an active chamber and we wanna keep it as a viable part of our city, an arm of the city, so I'm gonna make a recommendation that we add the $750 to their budget, which will bring them to an annual budget of $17,500. And they do have to pay some rent for the building they're in and of course, when you're paying rent and having a part-time worker, I think we've got a worker that's there about three days a week. Would that be correct, David? I believe David told me today that they're able to keep someone there, a man on the phone and answering questions about our city, recognizing income calls and callbacks and this kind of thing. So that's kinda what our chamber is doing and they've actually been visible for several years now and, and well-staffed and I believe Ms. Scott, at first they think, holds the chairperson, so she's the president of the board, directors of the Hamilton Chamber now and she has some other good folks working with her in that effort. So I'd like to recommend that. I would need a motion for us to pass this annual budget under the chamber. We have a motion.
I'll make it.
Herbert made this motion. Have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bobby Joe. All for this motion, say aye. Those opposed? That fast? Okay. Tammy abstained. She's on that board. She really don't need to vote in this matter and thank you for working with that board, Tammy, and we appreciate that. We got item seven of our business tonight. It's a recommendation to update all signature cards for the city of Hamilton with local banks and financial institutions. We will be removing Wade Williams and Francis Knight from the accounts and we'll be replacing those with Bob Page and Tammy Lewis-Williams and of course Angela, they're on all the signature cards, every bank we do business with and we'll be replacing the other two signatures. I'd make that as a recommendation. I will need a motion for that to happen. We have a motion. Kenneth made the motion. We have a second to that. Gene seconded the motion. All those in favor of replacing Wade and Francis with myself and Tammy on the signature cards and Angela will remain on the signature cards, say aye. Those opposed? Okay. Okay. Do any of you have anything to bring up tonight? Any other items from the board tonight? Any items that we need to address for you?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At least not certain too bad today. This is the item I was taking about the single paper.
Okay.
And I don't approve this. In fact, I'd like to see it turned down, rejected. It's changing the zoning era from R1 to FAR. And the reason why they're doing that, I haven't been told personally or anything, but there's two trailers in that era. There are rental trailers and R1 don't allow it. They don't, they don't allow trailers. Now they're wanting to change it to FAR so the trailers can stay there and I disapprove on that. They need to move those trailers. There are rental trailers and they're, they're falling down anyway. They've always been a sore, a eyesore for the city.
This is, this has been acted on by our zoning committee, is that correct? And it's now published in the paper and will this come to the council and mayor for a public hearing? Angela, is that the way we do zoning changes? Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna need to, we'll all have to address this matter before it becomes law or rule, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, can we keep this for consideration tonight?
That's right.
And do you need your copy back? We can get a copy of the paper if you need yours back. Okay, all right. You hold on to it, I'll get a copy for us to review and we'll take.
That's Saturday's paper.
Yeah, we'll have to announce that on our agenda, won't we, Angela, for, and have a public hearing on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Or maybe you others have the same sentiments, Mr. Lewis. We're gonna listen to everybody that speaks to us about this matter and we'll try to visit and see what you're talking about. I'm gonna ask the council to make the visit. This is down here for the meal, is that correct?
That's right. Just, just beyond the city cemetery.
Okay.
The street runs a lot of, parallel to the city cemetery, they've one trailer sits there in that corner and then Fourth, I mean, Fourth Street Northwest, the other one sits in the corner of it.
Okay, which side of Fourth Street is it on? North side?
Facing, facing west, it's on the, on the south side.
On the south side of Fourth Street?
Right.
Okay. We'll try to make it our, our business to go down and look at this and see what's there currently.
And we've got, we've got other changes that I've talked to you about, you know, later on when we get into this and.
As we all know, zoning's a very important part of our, our city for future and planning. We need to have a good zoning ordinance and we need to limit the times that we make exceptions for zoning ordinances. So we'll, we'll take that into consideration, Mr. Lewis. Thanks for bringing our attention tonight. We appreciate your voice in this and you'll have another opportunity to hear a public hearing on this, is I understand it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, Angela?
Well, we forgot to do something. I thought maybe we could close, maybe if we could close in the place of the prayer. I just thought of that, I'm sorry.
This one needed a amen at the end. I didn't intend to come here and give our application, though. I really like you.
I prayed to God. I didn't even know that.
I still have a great allegiance to this flag, you know, gentlemen, who you play for. Let's all stand and pledge a flag. We're a God's family. We're a God's family. Let's alert and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father for which stands one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Will Jack, would you pray for us at this time?
Lord, we thank you for the day you've given to us. Thank you for your mercy, your kindness. Lord, I thank you for these men and women that have come forward to help guide our city and make decisions that will help our city grow. Lord, we pray for that leadership that you said you'd send back that would guide us all the way to true. Praise Lord, that you let that Saint Spirit be with them as they make the decisions, guide them and direct them in these things they do. Help us all to be able to work together more as people that love you and love our city. I give you praise for asking your name. Amen.
Do you guys remember Brother Jack worked for this city for 20 years? How many years have you been in the tuff in the, to the police department, Brother Jack?
About 35.
35 years. He's been around here some, folks, and he knows a lot about this city. I've talked with him some and I appreciate Brother Jack and what he stands for and where his heart is. His heart's in Hamilton, Alabama and for this city, so thank you. I appreciate everybody that's come tonight. I'm sorry that I'm making a few blunders getting started, but you know, we're all on the same page here. We just don't wanna get too many things in reverse and that's my fault. I was so anxious to get into the business of the meeting tonight and I omitted some things, but a dismissal prayer is just about as good as an opening prayer, brother Jack.
I've seen some endings that should've ended with a prayer.
Angela, is there any other things that we've omitted tonight that you can think of? Scott, do you have anything to add to this meeting tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you for being here with us. Scott's our city attorney and. Okay. Thank you for being here with us. Scott's our city attorney and his voice will be heard a lot during our administration because we're gonna lean on him pretty heavy to
I'll try to speak up for him then.
And he's not gonna talk in his low voice. He gonna open up when he addresses the crowd. We might get him one of these. But anyway, thank y'all tonight and I hope everybody's pleased with our national election today. It's a pretty serious time for our country and let's continue to support city government. I appreciate the ones that are here tonight and I really enjoyed the festivity last night that you let us open with a meet and greet and I appreciate those who stayed and fellowshiped with us and shaking hands and getting to know your neighbor a little better. There's nothing wrong with that. We wanna have a better city as we go forward. If there's no other items of business tonight, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Bobby Joe made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jean seconded. All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.